This conference will now be recorded.
Is the treasurer remote or here?
She's gonna be remote.
Okay. Well, I had to ask.
Are we recording?
You are recording.
We will call to order this 6:00 PM meeting of the monetary select board on May 25th, 2022. And the first item on the agenda is meeting with the treasurer who will be here any minute. But we can jump right into old business. So the first agenda item in old business is the select board code of conduct, which we discussed. We discussed last week and we made a couple changes, which I see you did make. Hello.
How you doing?
Hey, just not all right. Good, how are you doing?
Good.
So we're waiting. The treasurer's joining us remotely.
Okay.
So we're not gonna discuss that.
Sure.
Until she's here. So Susan, I see you added, or you talked about adding, including but not limited to fiscal responsibility for the town. Hiring appointment and oversight of town employees, appointed boards, commissions, town council. I have, I think all those changes are good.
Okay.
If that's all the changes.
That's all I had, so let's do it.
The one thing is could we capitalize town meeting versus town meeting awards?
Okay.
That would be my one.
Yep, yep.
Change. And then I think we're pretty, we're familiar with that enough now.
Yep.
I would motion to approve this code of conduct.
Second.
Is there any public input? All right, we'll all vote. Susan?
Yes.
And all vote yes, and this code of conduct is approved.
The ten-point plan is gonna be a long enough conversation, we might wanna wait till after.
Yeah, why don't we, yeah, we'll hold off on number two until after the treasurer conversation. So agreed and hate for bill. I just finally got back with the KP law bill.
Okay, and what did they say about their bill?
They agreed with all of the changes that we made.
Okay.
And the remaining additional fees were $3,000, $3,003. But they accepted all of the recommendations that we made. It's my understanding we have some money. Well, it's, it's my understanding we have some money in the litigation fees account, and maybe some of it is already designated to.
Litigation?
Another expense. So we could, can we do an, a transfer from the select board expenses account potentially if we have money there?
We can, but I actually have, I might be able to sum up that money.
Let's see, oh, well.
And then.
We have to pay the bills somehow, where are we taking it from is what it comes down to.
There may be other lines we could take it from, Oregon and the DASROs or fund transfer.
And we can start doing transfers in June, or we can already do them.
I think we can already do them.
Okay. So I don't know if we wanna, it sounds like it's probably gonna be another week, but at least now we know. I mean, I'm not, me personally, I don't, it's unfortunate that we ran high legal bills last year, but.
Hopefully not this year.
But I'm not willing to dispute, I don't think it makes sense to dispute it any further.
Oh, no.
We.
And the fact that they moved that makes me feel much better about it.
So, and attorney Riley, Melissa has an email, so she can get it too if you're interested, but he pretty much just said it was earnest.
Great.
So that's 3,000, just over $3,000 that we need to come up with, and we can either do a transfer, and if we absolutely need to, we can do a reserve fund transfer request.
Okay. So how do we figure out where to, what are our options or?
I'll go over the accounts tomorrow and I'll find one that.
Okay, that you think might work, okay.
Yeah.
That would be great, thank Melissa.
So if you go over town manager, you know, where we can get that money from.
Okay.
No treasurer yet.
She said she's getting the link right now, she didn't find it.
Then why don't we just, does it make sense to, I feel like most of the other items are.
It's gonna be longer, yep.
Longer, so why don't we just?
Wait for the treasure. Oh, okay.
How's Joe doing, Justin?
He's good, he's in.
Is he running?
He's in Philadelphia.
Is he?
Yeah, then he went to school there and then he did two more. He did six years of school there and then he's never, he just stuck around.
He likes out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely a lot more out there.
Yeah.
Are you working right there?
Yeah, please.
Yep. Been there for five years now.
Do you see her?
Sarah, is that you?
Well, one thing we could just talk briefly about is Memorial Day parade.
Okay.
So it's my understanding usually the select board is in the parade and lays the wreaths in front of town hall, in front of the library, and in the river. And there's a couple things going on this year, which is that we only have two select board members and three wreaths.
I'm appointing to do two of them because it'll take a lot longer for me.
Well, yeah, and that's the other thing is if we wanted to find some method of transportation that works for you.
So Scott Jensen at the CDA meeting today suggested I talk to Mr. Hebert about borrowing his golf cart.
He doesn't have a golf cart, yeah.
So Scott's gonna get me his stuff and hopefully, and I'll give him a call, if that doesn't work out, you're gonna, Hobbie's gonna be pushing me in in your mom's spare wheelchair.
Okay, and I, well.
I don't have another option.
And I have one other golf cart option.
Okay.
That's guaranteed, but if you check with Hebert first, it's good.
Okay.
And I guess the general gist of it is gathering around 12:30 up at 23:00 in San Steel. And I guess what we could do as well, if we wanted, we could get a kid to do another wreath, or a couple kids or something.
That's a fun idea.
Or an adult, but maybe, maybe a kid would work. I just didn't know what you thought about.
I like, I'm okay with, like, if a person has a strong feeling, wants to do it, I'm with them. I think probably a lot of people would love having their, you know, kids love to do stuff like that.
Yeah.
Let's make them feel involved.
Yeah, sure. Okay, and that's pretty much, that's why I put it on the agenda, was just so that we could flush that out, and we'll find you a golf cart and.
She's having connectivity issues, so she's rebooting and saying.
Our favorite.
Just wanted to tip someone the guys.
You wanted to discuss like what time you're gonna meet next week, I know it's part of another issue maybe.
Yeah, no, well, that's a good item. So time, I think you mentioned something about the town clerk who's an employee. We're expecting to have maybe a conversation with next week or have something. Have a letter or a conversation with her, their president. But I think people know that, like, the board typically meets or often meets in the evening. And so I don't think we're required to do, have that conversation during business hours.
Okay. I mean, as long as we're gonna, I'm hoping that we're gonna draft a letter to her today so we can get it by then, and if we wanna have it at 6:00, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think it's something that just comes with the territories that board meetings are, are on Monday evening. Only the morning is something like on morning.
Okay.
I don't, it doesn't, I don't think it poses a real issue at all.
Anybody have any comment on that, including Melissa? No, okay, okay. So, and if it would enable you to do the other meeting?
Yes, yes.
As long as we don't foresee there being a problem, then on Friday.
Okay, yeah, no, I think it's fine. So we'll, we'll plan on 6:00 PM next Wednesday.
January 1st.
5:18, so I don't think they're 5:23. I made edits to 5:18.
Oh, we had them free.
But if you don't, then we can always take a week. The requirement is three meetings or 30 days, whichever is longer.
I think plenty of go, but I don't think I have it either, or if I did, I couldn't tell you.
It's not.
Which one? The 18 or the 23?
Okay, I'll always send them to you.
Okay, thank you. Title the meeting minutes so I can find them for sure?
I think what generally we tried to do last year is just do them the next.
Meeting, yeah.
Next meeting, but if, if.
If there's a.
If we're running, you know, if you have to choose between doing something else on the agenda and doing minutes, we can always put minutes off a week. It's real.
But I will have a.
We're usually, you know, basing off of the 30-day deadline instead of the three meeting, because we usually are meeting more frequently than three meetings in 30 days, but.
All right.
That's still an requirement, and we're not required to do this.
It's just like you get it while you don't remember what happened.
Yeah, no, it's, then they build up.
What about the organizational flow chart? I hope that we can knock that one out quick.
I would, I would jump around more, but I don't, I'm afraid of getting lost later on.
I know.
What about the 5:4 minutes, because that's just you.
Yeah, I mean, I can, we can, we can knock stuff up.
Do it. Let's do it. We can also do the moncom. Oh, she's having trouble connecting, okay.
Yes, so we'll address new business number 10, conservation commission deployment, Rosin Dolber. And Rosin wrote to the select board, and Chris Blair wrote to the select board expressing the request to appoint Rosin Dolber to the conservation commission. I would move that we appoint Rosin Dolber to the conservation commission for a three-year period through May 25th, 2025.
Uh, second?
Any public comment on that matter? Okay, we'll call the vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and that motion carries and the appointment is made.
How many does that actually give us at this point in the moncom?
So we have Noel, Wiki, Rosin Dolber, and then Chris, Tim, and Dave.
That's five.
So it's five, but three of them are only appointed through September.
Right, number nine. So we basically need three new people, because they really were just going in.
And there's seven unavailable seats.
So we could appoint two more just to sort of train if we can find people who want to serve, because beyond the moncom with experienced people is the best way to earn a job, I think.
Yeah. It's my understanding it's a pretty technical position, and there's a lot of regulations to know and to train on. And so the idea was when we appointed Chris Blair, Ken Laba, and Dave Dempsey, was that they would train new people, so we are booking for commissioners. Absolutely. To immediately, more in September, depending on.
Is that you, Sarah?
I guess we could do the 5:4 minutes, because what I'm gonna ask you to do is. I'm gonna move, move that Justin is the only current select board member who was present for the May 4th, 2022 executive session. Approve those minutes.
Second.
Second from Susan, and I will vote yes.
Yes.
Susan votes yes. And. Melissa, can you please add in the minutes that I'm approving the 5:4 executive session minutes, but not for public release at this time? And it looks like Sarah's here. Hello, can you hear us?
Can you hear her?
She's muted.
No, isn't that?
She's probably gonna walk this through these, like.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that makes immediate sense about this, other than I know that there's an interest rate that's applied to basically what is allowed to be charged if the board goes that route. But hopefully she'll explain, because this is, it's entirely new board from the last time that we met.
Right.
On this, not entirely, mostly not.
She's dialing in now because it won't let her on me.
Sometimes. Where, where is their offices?
She is in a little country town nowhere.
Not local.
It is spotty at best.
That's agenda 15, right?
Conservation of the public?
Lack of internet and cell service.
Oh, right, yes, well, but it's not here. Uh, yeah. Let me see, they keep coming around.
Well, every time I'm calling, she's gonna call her.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
I'm so sorry about that. Internet was not working, so I had to run down the basics, they said it, and I, for some reason, my audio wasn't working when I tried to do it through the camera. I do apologize.
That's okay, no worries. So Sarah, it's Justin here, and last time that you explained this to the select board, we had a differently composed select board, so would you mind running us through the numbers quickly, please? We have the spreadsheet in front of us.
Okay. So the, the amount of years that they've owed in back taxes, they've owed since 2010, and 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 is a smaller amount. The amount on your spreadsheet did include the $4,000, $4,59, $56, which are legal fees. So in, there's a little bit more interest in there than the total of $13,573,81. So as of today, or June 1st, the amount that they would have to pay back is $14,040.04. The tax portion is $3,074,661. The interest piece is $5,833,75. And the legal fees are $4,000, $4,59, $56.
And it's my understanding that we can either offer the property back to the owners, or we can put it. We can start a bidding process, is that true, Sarah?
That is correct, so we are able to vacate the final judgment, which means that the town currently owns it, but if we were to vacate the final judgment, it would clear the title for them, and the town would no longer have a lien on the property. And the prior owner would then take ownership again. Or we keep it in tax title, or, I'm sorry, as a possession, and we do an auction. I would suggest bundling it, I did speak to Zico's group. If we were to do anything, a recommendation would be to do more than one property. A lot of the properties are land, so the town might want to consider doing some perk tests to make it more valuable, and you'll get more people out there to auction.
Would that be that we'd be selling all of the properties to a single buyer? When you say bundle?
No, we would, no, when you do the perk test, we would, what I mean bundle and auction means we do all the possessions the town has and do one auction at a time, and they would be individual buyers. But in order to get more money, then possibly do, like I said, a perk test or do a little bit more of what-ends, looking into what, if it's a buildable lot or not, which does cost a little bit for the town, but the outcome is a lot more usually in what the bidding is.
Do you know how many properties we're talking about?
I do not off the top of my head, I will have to see if there's more that we can add. I think originally, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Melissa, were there seven properties that were originally looked at at Zico's?
That sounds about right.
Yeah, so there may have been, not that I've taken some in here, but Zico's, I believe, had come out in the past request, you know, to do this, but they also suggested again at this time to do, put a little money into these properties to make them more valuable, and the town at that time chose not to go that route, so no auction was done.
Melissa, you know, would it be the assessor that would have a record of the properties and their estimated values?
Yeah, you have a list of the properties, right, Sarah?
I don't have the current list, I think I have the, just the original list of the seven properties, but there's two ways about going to do that. One, depending on how far back Maury's data goes, we might be able to, be able to pull which properties were put into tax title. The other one is I know that Ron Berenson has been, he's the lawyer for the town, has been the lawyer for many, many, many years, that he would be able to also give us a list, and then we can cross-reference that with the assessor's town-owned properties. Because we can't sell, it has to be specifically possessions that we can sell if we choose to do other town-owned properties outside the possessions that are either given to the town in lieu of foreclosure or any other items that are donated to the town. There's a different timeline that's needed for those types of auctions versus tax possession auctions.
So essentially, we have to make, as I understand it, we have two independent decisions. One is what to do with Lupiani property as well as, secondarily, we'll need to make a decision about all these other properties as well, whether we include the Lupiani property in that bundle or not.
Yeah, well, it's my, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that what is unique about this property is that the owners have, have come forward and stated that they might be willing to pay, are willing, they are willing to pay the amount to take it out of tax title and take the lien off of it?
That is correct, yes.
And that's not the case for the other properties that the town owns?
Correct.
Yeah, so, and Susan, I think what would make sense is for, there, there's no financial policy at this point, Melissa, right? Informing the board how to proceed. I think what would make sense is making an individual decision on this case, what happens when the, when the owners are willing to pay to take the lien off, pay to back taxes, interest, and legal fees, rather than auction the property off, but then also to make a policy so that it's not an arbitrary decision every time that this comes up, not that it comes up frequently.
Does anybody know when the last time it came up was?
Not in my 16 years.
Not in your 16 years, so clearly it's not a frequent occurrence, which matters, right? We would be setting a policy in a way, but only in terms of precedent, it's not like this is happening twice a year or anything.
That, yeah, that is a good point, as a treasurer, I just would like to interject. We want to make sure that we don't set precedents that will hurt the town financially in the future, because you have to remember, no taxes have been paid on this property at all for the past seven years, and we cannot recoup those seven years of taxes. They are only paying what was owed for six years plus interest. Again, it could be a slippery slope where, you know, personally, if you wanted to do an auction every year, that might entice people to actually pay their tax title off instead of coming into the circumstance. And maybe instead of doing a decision, unfortunately tonight, you, we need to set a policy, so like you said, very clear strict guidelines to when this is something that could happen again in the future. That's just my take.
Can you, why exactly are the last seven years not included in the taxes out?
Because the town has owed it for seven years, so therefore there have been. Correct, yeah. So we did move taxes.
Sarah, it's also my understanding from last time speaking with you that the $14,000 and $14,040 is what the town is legally allowed to charge for, for the property? No less or no more?
Yes.
And if the property went to auction, it would, we'd have to follow the auction rules, whatever they may be, but we have no guarantee on how much money it would.
So there are some rules, like we do, we can turn it down, so there is one piece I'm not clear on, I can get advice from counsel. We could put this up to auction, and if nobody auctions more than $14,000, we can deny, we can choose not to accept the bid, the final bid, if it's less than what we want. The only question is, I do not know if we then can turn around back to the owners and say, well, now we'll accept the $14,000. That's something I will have to ask counsel about, if that's the route you'd like to look.
Typically with most, like, I've never auctioned land, but whenever I've been involved and watched auctions, there's always something called the reserve price, which basically says the person selling the property or item will not take less than this price, so that's the starting bid, and if there'll be bids, then it doesn't sound like.
There you go, yeah. And Sarah, one other question. So you'll ask the lawyer how that would work if we rejected the auction price, and you also were, to the best of my recollection, going to ask the lawyer if a relative, you said that the initial owner couldn't participate in the auction, and you were wondering if a relative could participate in the auction?
Yes, and when I spoke with him, it's actually a gray area, which is, again, another one of those situations we need to to decide beforehand, because even though this person who is maybe a grandchild of the person who owns it, did they have at the time financial interest in the property or gains at the time, or were they aware of this happening? If they were not, then they, from my understanding, they are allowed to bid on the property. But again, it's that gray area of he said, she said, so it would obviously have to be something at the time when they come in, maybe invest more money on whether or not they're allowed to bid.
Also, what if the person was not an adult at the time legally?
Oh, that, that's a very good question, that, that would be probably more of the answer, they probably wouldn't have known about it. But I will follow up on that, because that is, does change the scenario, I believe, a little bit. Let me just make a note of that, if they were a minor at the time?
All right, so it sounds like we have more information than we did last time, and you'll, you'll ask the attorney those follow-up questions?
Yes, and I just wanna re-ask again, can follow up on the questions I'm gonna ask, so I don't miss anything. The first one is reject the final bid if it comes less than $14,000. The first one is, reject the final bid if it comes less than fourteen thousand dollars. Can we turn back and then ask the owners for the fourteen thousand if they're still interested? And the other one is, if they were a minor at the time, can they bid in the auction, even if they're a relative?
Yes, so, and I don't think that's a, it sounds like that's not a, maybe, it sounds like the, the interested party was a minor at the time, the relative, is that the case?
I, I, that was, I guess, yep.
Twelve, depending on how you count. Hence my, I gascurate.
Mentally, he's still a minor. Hundred percent.
Who said? Okay, thank, thank you, Sarah.
Um, the, the other question I just wanted to ask was, do you guys want me to follow up and start digging into how many properties are possession versus town-owned? Is that something you want to invest with the lawyer, to have them get involved as well? Or do you want?
If we're holding at least seven properties, we should make a decision about what to do with that.
Yeah, it, it would be good if we could get a report on that. I don't know about the perk tests, because I don't know where we would come up with money to perk test those properties, maybe, you know, we could put that in the budget for next year if we decided to go that route, but I don't think we have any money on hand to do those kinds of things this year.
I can, I can see about the budget. I know that, that in, when we do the recap, possibly, for tax title, there is an option to do it. I can see if that would fall under that, being that they were tax titled properties, and get back to, and, and, or if not, we can do it next year.
But it would be great to know how many properties are involved, so we can make a decision to go forward, if you want to go forward with it?
Okay.
Okay. Dom?
Do we know what the assessed value of that property is?
We had that number last.
I'm sorry?
We had that, we had that number last week, but, you know, one thing is that the assessed value doesn't really so much to what it would draw in an auction, right? So I don't know how much we really want to base our decision off of that, but it, it's worth having. And Helen, you have a question?
I do. When you're looking to find out about the other six or seven properties, it would also be interesting to find out how long you've owned those properties.
Yeah.
I mean, Melissa said she's never participated in any of these kinds of discussions, so we're talking about property probably taking more than sixteen years.
No, I said I never had it where family, a family buy it back.
Right, I think it's important to find out, you know, how long these other properties were.
Property is assessed at ninety-two thousand two hundred.
Ninety-two thousand two hundred?
Yep.
So I hope we can get to the. Sarah?
If you also wanted to include, oh, I'm sorry, what's that?
What were you saying?
You're good to go.
Oh, I, I think also to include, if you could start drafting a process or a policy for any future, or at least start the thought process of a policy to put in place for the town for if this comes up in the future again, so we're, you know, any board or any department familiar with the situation and what the town's idea was at the time to sell properties back to prior owners of tax title?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lupiani Bradley, do you want to speak to the issue?
Yeah, I mean, so I guess, who's it up to, kind of? Is it up to you guys?
Yeah, the, I mean, ultimately, the select board has to decide whether or not to, to offer the property back.
So honestly, at the time when it was taken, I was twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old, so I had nothing to do with it. It'd be more my father talked to it, but there was a lot of family issues going on, a lot of medical issues.
And I actually had a lawyer with money set aside to pay you guys.
Which is a whole, another issue.
So that's another thing, that went back quite a ways, so you, Mel and Peter, Relliano, so, so you wanted to discuss something with him too, so.
Yeah, supposedly, the money was there to be paid, it wasn't paid for whatever reason, and obviously, it wasn't paid, and we're here now. But yeah, the whole, yeah.
And I was hurt.
He had hip replacement twelve years ago, I mean, so, obviously, it wasn't paid, it was, you know, family's fault. I'm kind of growing up now, and to see that it hasn't been auctioned off yet, and I was hoping that, you know, it kind of makes me play and pay forward.
And I was told by Peter that, and I was told by Peter that it was, I couldn't get it back, so I took the money and gave it to, well, somebody else, out of the, what his whole, the whole, he said he had it. And that went back, I'd say at least six years or more, so, so I set it aside, that he had it, so, but anyway.
Yeah, it was definitely, and my mother's not here right now, but she told me she had made multiple phone calls, I don't know who she called, but I had called, I want to say I talked to Sarah, possibly Melissa, but I think it was Sarah.
No, you spoke to me.
Okay, so I spoke to Sarah.
Yep.
And she basically told me exactly what she said tonight, and then I contacted a lawyer that I dealt with in the past, and he had sent somebody in the town some sort of letter, and we're here now, but that's, as soon as I kind of was at the age where I was like, hey, you know, maybe I could get this back from family, I tried to, I contacted who I thought necessary, and we're out, yeah.
All right, well, I think we do, we're going to take a little time to think and answer these follow-up questions, and hopefully, do this as soon as possible, resolve it one way or the other.
Ah, is there a way to contact you, or you're going to contact us, or what's kind of the next step?
I think at this point, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks or months, we'll have it back on the agenda. But if you want, we can notify you that it's going to be back on the agenda.
Sure, I.
If you want to leave your email or something.
Sure.
We'll, we'll.
Yeah, I'll get that too.
We need, we need to have a clearer picture of what all the other details are, and, you know, this is week two on the job for me, so, sorry. But, you know, I think it's cool that you want to get it back, but, um, we just have to be really cognizant of what it means going forward. It doesn't look like there's a ton of people here to help, so.
So, yeah, we'll try it in the next couple of weeks, let's just couple of months, have it back on the agenda and make a decision, once you have all the information ready, so. All right.
All right.
Thanks.
Sounds good.
Good night.
Good night.
Melissa, are there any paper masks anywhere?
Do you need one?
I don't have to, I don't want to get, there's nothing that I can go get.
No, it's in my office.
Um, okay, we jumped around a little bit before the meeting with the treasurer, but we're going to jump right back into old business, so, ten-point plan based on recommendations made by the Green Report. So I got the comments from Susan and Melissa, and I think some of the comments, like, how will this be achieved, you know, are, are, are good questions. I think the goal is to set these goals and then, and then figure out how to, you know, address retaliation, or if we're getting a human resources director and they're going to accomplish some of these objectives, that's great, I don't think it means they shouldn't, I think they should be included on here, and then, you know, the board, at the end of the day, in my view, just needs to oversee that these happen one way or another, whether it's the board doing it, or the human resource director, the town administrator, whoever it may be, we just need to make sure that some of these things get done.
I, I would agree with you. My, my concern is immediate implies to me that we're supposed to do them like right now, whereas, like, if we're in the process of hiring HR person to do this, and there's a lot of legal stuff involved, which there absolutely is, and until we have that HR person on board, I don't see a way for us, even if we wanted to draft the policy and admit that, once it turned out to be legal, we would have to go with it in opening, which is really not viable with a computer.
So what we, what we can do is, I see immediate two times in here, we can remove immediate the two times that it comes up, and then it just becomes should implement procedures and action must be taken.
Right.
Which, you know, hopefully, will be done as soon as possible, but we're waiting on, on a couple of things.
Are you okay with the other, like, include annual employee reviews as a little stretch? I mean, if we're, if we're going into the human resources policy and procedures, I feel like that ought to be in there. I don't know about how it's numbered, but I think I was struggling with the edit feature.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
I don't know that one should, you know, maybe four should actually have been in. I, I don't know if it should be a self-numbered.
And I had edits as well. Melissa, by any chance, did you see, did I email you a copy of this? I think it's kind of on the later side.
Today?
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not expecting that we will, that we're ready to adopt it, but I do want to share my edits with Susan.
Okay, let me incorporate.
I mean, I, I edited some things, and I can't recall every edit at this, at this point in time, but like, for example, it says job leadership training for all select board members and commissioner, council chairs. I think you wrote, and I kind of agree with, maybe more so than chairs of boards, it's for department heads, administrators, select board members.
And by the way, I have subsequently talked to Garrett, and not only has he had a lot of leadership training, not surprisingly, but also Bryant has been in charge of leadership training, and I think was either had just, was about to complete the last of the multiple years of training, which I think is great, like that, but it's good to know that that's already happened.
Yeah.
And I, I think I like it in there as a matter of policy anyway, because it means that the town recognizes the importance of it, and that it's important for people to regularly, professional development is important.
Yeah.
And, and, you know. I can't do it on the call.
Yeah.
No, but. That's what it has changed.
So. I think I, I said the town should, so I started from the top.
Okay.
I didn't have any gene at the top, but the, instead of reinstating the administrative assistant role, just the town should separate the town administrator role.
Where are we?
Uh, eight.
Eight, okay. Did we just strike six point one?
No, I think I moved six to the bottom, just because I felt like.
Okay, I see, I see.
It's, it's one of the ones that we have a bit of discussion about, I think it's one of the more minor.
Right.
Points.
So now, what was eight is now seven? Just checking, the town should better, and we're now like.
No, just eight on here, if we're operating off the same. The town should separate the town administrator role from the select board secretary role, the position of select, select board secretary, uh, being reinstated as a separate position from the TA, and then I just changed the injunction. But I think at, at this point, right, we agree on one, right, should retain professional human resource services.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so that's.
And I, I would say that this list is possibly not completely complete, but it has at least a minimum of things that we think should be in there. I, that, we may have, there may be things we didn't include on this list, should also be in there, but we need to completely redo the employmental and justice.
Yeah.
And this, like, all league attendance stuff, so, yeah, I think we definitely agree on that.
And then, what we could, sorry, two changes to mine, if we just work off of, I guess, mine as the most recent.
Yep, that's what I, so that's what I have.
We'll just strike, strike the two immediately. Um, and then, now, point number nine, the record keeping duties should be transferred from the town administrative position. I know that, that was something that we have discussed the function. Out of all the comments, I think many of the comments are, you know, how are we going to do this, and the HR director is wanting to do this, which I think doesn't mean they should, I think they should still be listed in here, but I think maybe the one that there is the most question about, other than how is it going to get done, is this record keeping duties?
So my one comment here is that, so.
Which is the same comment you made last meeting, Melissa?
Um, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if I made it the same way, but from my perspective, the select board, we are the ultimate administrative authority in town. We have redressed, if, if we ask for document and we don't get it, under normal conditions, that is, we, you know, can deal with it by saying, we asked for this document, we should have this document, please deliver this document, and, and that is, you know, when an employee, you ask them to do something and they don't do it, you say, we asked you to do it, you need to do it. The fact that previous select boards did not actually use the power that they were entitled to, doesn't mean there's a problem with the system, it means there's a problem with the individuals that were not acting with the authority of their possession.
Yeah.
Like, a boss that doesn't make their employee do their job, it's not the employee's, it's not the fault of the system, the power is there, it just wasn't being exercised. So it doesn't necessarily mean you have to alter the system, it means you have to recognize that you, in fact, are empowered to get those documents, and therefore, they must be delivered to you. Now.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a little bit messier in the fray, where, right, right, but sometimes, well, one tricky part about working on a board is that individually, you have no power whatsoever, right? But I also am, I do see the, the practical, functional points of the fact that the town administrator is privy to, to the documents and familiar with them, but I, I also know that it's kind of a burdensome activity at some points when records requests are, are flying high. Melissa, do you have a?
I make the most sense, Justin, for any record request. I'm the only one that's here forty hours a week, and I guess maybe I'm unclear on if you're talking about all records, because to take that away from me doesn't make any sense when I am the one doing the work for the select board, and that would mean, so you're, you're saying all records, that would mean I wouldn't no longer have access to the Board of Health, the ZBA, all the records that I'm currently the records access officer for, it, it doesn't make any sense, I mean, who would you give it to, someone that's going to be, that doesn't work for office hours?
Yeah. So I, I think logistically.
And also, are we talking about, when you say record keeping duties, are we talking RAO, or are we talking anything to do with any documents? Because that functionally, it doesn't make sense for the person doing the drafting of many documents, or the handling of many documents, to then say, oh, well, I got this, here, I'm giving it to you, so you can file it and then send it out to other people. It makes a lot more, it, you know, in the old days?
Yeah.
People had secretaries that came in and took dictation and wrote their letters around. But no, that's very inefficient, who does that now, people draft their own letters, right? So from a functional standpoint, I don't know how much sense it makes to ask somebody else to be handling documents somebody's already handling, because now it's handled by two people.
Yeah, and.
For RAO, I think that's a separate matter. Am I, is there something else I'm missing?
Well, there, the record keeping and record accessing, in some ways, is different, but in many ways, it's very much the same, to my understanding.
Yeah, it's all the, yeah, it's all the same, and I guess to expand on what you said, Susan, if this is based on the Green Report, it'd be interesting to know how this came up, because if it was due to one select board member who refused to come in here and ask for documents, that's a whole nother problem. In my sixteen years here, when anybody during a meeting, after a meeting, when I'm at home has asked for a document, you have it like that, so I, I'm not sure I understand why this is even in here. My, my guess is that there was a select board member who was no longer here anymore that made a complaint that he wanted a document, was told he needed to come in, because he wasn't just going to be given access to someone's personnel file with some of the things that he did around here.
Okay, so, and, and I think, other than, other than this point, which is now number nine, a lot of the other, or most everything else seems to be generally agreed upon, so why don't we consider, we'll take, we'll use my current draft, we'll strike the two times that immediately comes up, because we agree that it's things that we want to get done, but maybe they need some thought and need professional assistance.
And I, I also think what's on your draft number seven, the town, I, I agree, we need to review the town administrator's job description, but I think that's got to be sort of part and. Review the town administrator's job description, but I think that's gotta be sort of part and parcel of. Reviewing all the job descriptions. Um, I I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done. Um, I, and obviously it's gonna make, there is a contract, so it would have to be done in accordance with the contract. But I do say, I think we should be looking at everybody's job description. The new ones are probably accurate, but I don't know about older ones. Um. So just so we're clear, I'm not opposed to, I think we should look at everybody's job descriptions. I think we should have a job description for the town clerk, for example.
Yeah. Yeah.
Turns out not to be a simple thing at all.
So why why don't we come back to this next week and I will.
Want to clean this up a little?
I will clean this up.
Okay.
So it's not a.
A ma- yeah, too many different things.
There's too much going on on this copy. And strike immediately.
Right.
I'll 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 think about it and probably strike number nine or reword it.
Okay.
And come back, I will come back with this next week. And I think, you know, one thing that's been going on is although we haven't formally adopted this plan. We are working on many of the.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, recommendations, so uh the fact that we haven't formally adopted it isn't slowing us down.
No, it's not.
But why don't we, I'll come, I will take the responsibility of coming back with this next week. If that works for you.
That that totally kind of.
And then you can take a week off from this document.
I was just pondering, um. The one other thing that I remember coming up last year was some select board members making very lengthy um information requests. Um, and, you know, I'm not sure if that's rolled into this concept. Or not.
So.
Are we talking, because there's difference, there's a difference between documents you're using to do select or business and like. I want every conversation so and so has ever had concerning any topic whatsoever the last five years.
Yeah. So and so enough, enough, at the end of the day, the public records law.
Allows that, right.
governs, governs that. And we can't overcome, or we can't change the public records law and the state supervisor of records.
No.
That, you know, they govern that law and, you know, this.
Yep. But I think that's separate from what this is. Am I correct in thinking that you're not talking about the public record law when you write this?
So I actually, I didn't write that. I, like I said, you know, most, these were actually, it it started out merely as a summary with no input from me.
Okay.
Just verbatim.
From that, right, right, right.
Uh, extracting what I summarized to be the most, the the, well, all of the recommendations. And then at the end of the day, if we don't want to adopt certain recommendations or act on certain recommendations, I would rather us. Flesh that out now instead of saying we are going to do X, Y, and Z and then never follow.
Yeah.
Right. If we change our mind, that's different, but at some point I would like to be able to sign on to a a plan. So that it's, we have, we have a long-term goal and we can be held accountable to it.
Okay.
Um, and yeah, if we don't, if number four, number six, we think, okay, we don't want to do that, let's not put in the plan. Um, I'd rather have things that we decide are good recommendations, uh but kind of starting with.
Okay.
What we were offering.
Alright.
Um, and by the way, there is a fact on that. Um, I will come back with this next week with some of the changes we discussed potentially for adoption and. And if we're not ready, then then we'll take another week, but I'll I'll take responsibility for that.
Interactions on SB interaction, I think I somehow missed this one with other boards and many members, how staff and how, did, did you say that our code contact burden does that?
I did base it off of. Off of that, um.
I'm trying to think if there was anything specifically in there about interactions with that. I mean, it was pretty general.
Well, it it was pretty general, you know, to be courteous and professional.
Yeah, but I have to ask. Okay.
I think there's, of course, there's other things that are going to come up, like the chain of.
Command, right.
Command, that's gonna give that aspect of great things, but the code, how how do you conduct? Um, yourself, I did try to address first, you know, related to that recommendation.
I I feel like we did address that, so, okay, that's cool.
So setting a special option to fill select board vacancies, the next item on the agenda. I was responsible for reaching out to the caucus chairs and the town clerk. And what I learned from the caucus chairs was that as long as we. Follow the sixty-four day notice, it should give them time to call the caucuses. Um, so the sixty-four day minimum notice really seems to be the. A driving factor. And then the town clerk mentioned that. The election workers, it's not necessarily a lot of strain on the election workers, because it's a simple.
Yeah.
Um, but there's only one item on the ballot, but that the automark machine, which is required, which we are required to have by the state. Which to my understanding basically is like a a handicap accessible ballot. Which it doesn't sound like people actually use, but it's a requirement from the Secretary of State. Um, that is the only thing that might provide any complications as to when it can be.
Okay.
Um, I guess we have one machine and in between elections, it is set out to be re. Programmed, or there's a chip that's set out to be reprogrammed. Um, and that may take some time, but that we might possibly look into getting a different. Um, chip, but we need to look into that and. Um, how that would figure in, because we have elections in early September and November, right, for the state primary and.
So I wonder, did did the clerk say how long a term that generally is for that?
I think it's a couple of weeks, um, but let me get more, let's get a more concrete. Answer on that, but it sounded like maybe if we could do it before the September elections, that would be. Preferable.
Um, were there any other, like what I call blackout dates?
I didn't, um, other than that, what the automark requires to be programmed.
So let's see, it's sixty-four days is how many?
Nine in a day.
And nine in a day. So were we to. Call for an election at our next meeting, that would be one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight. Nine in a day. The earliest day would be Thursday, the fourth.
Of August.
So we'd probably, of August, so we'd probably be talking about Tuesday, the ninth of August, right? Is that?
Yeah, minimum, or even the sixteen points that are maybe. So why don't we?
And we'd have to watch out about going too late in August if we might consist with the September.
Yes. So tentatively, let's just, let's plan on August. Ninth, sixteen to twenty-third from twelve PM to seven PM.
Okay. But we need to find out about the automark machine.
The automark machine, and and the only other. The only other question that I would have for town council. When we have town council is if there's anything we need to do, because usually the elections are called. In the town meeting warrant. I don't know if we need to do anything official.
Oh, how do we not complete?
How do we officially announce an election?
Okay.
Do we need to sign something and post it? Um, now, because frankly, the town meeting warrant doesn't come out, you know, it can come out as late as seven days before town meeting. Uh, and the election process happens long before that.
Which I don't think. So we need to officially announce it so we have a chance to process.
So I will look into, I will look into those three dates tentatively, the ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third of August.
Um, is it worth, well, we we don't yet have new council. Do you want to choose a council and then is it with that sucker?
Yeah. Yeah, I I, yeah, I'm afraid I wouldn't even get an answer. That's part of the reason I didn't even ask KP Law about the agreement, if it goes, I'm.
Right. Okay.
At this point, it. It seems like they're fading out.
Right.
Um, because technically they have two days left or something.
Right, right, right.
Um. Twelve, so I will look into those three tentative dates, whether they work for the turnaround on automark. And. I will look into if there's anything official way to call the election, and I I might ask council or and or state elections.
We might have to ask state elections if they're kind of in the in-between council moments.
Yeah.
Um, maybe that should be our next topic of discussion.
Yeah, so that is, so that will wrap special election on that note. I'm gonna look into those tentative dates. And the automark and related to elections. And I was just planning on twelve PM to seven PM, but if at any point. You have a different idea. Um, so let's entertain that, but I think twelve PM to seven PM.
Um, I would like to get on an agenda sometime between now and that election. That I would like us to have um some type of formalized process for how, um, in in some type of writing. For how people who are running for office are informed and sworn in. Um, we don't have it and it's sort of been catch as cast can. And I I will be honest, I, as I was making calls for the lawyers. Several of the people I talked to were courts, and I actually said, hey, how do you do this? It's pretty verbal. Um, I, you know, one person said, well, I email everybody, um, and they had a representative at town meetings, so. They would, um, all of the new town meeting reps would come and that court would swear them in the beginning of the meeting, like there was quite.
Yeah.
Different towns at different places. So I I, as far as I know, we don't have a policy, but I. Because there was some confusion in this last election, I would like to see us have a policy.
Yeah.
So everybody knows. Um.
I'll be open to that. My concern as usual. Are we, did we lose that?
A little bit.
It's just a projector. Um.
Your concern would be?
Is is, um, and I guess if there's discretion left up to the to the clerk on how to do that, and it's it's an appointed clerk. Then the select board can potentially have a say, but, you know, I think in some ways it makes a lot of sense for the. Select board to stay out of elections. Uh, tight.
I would be okay with that, except that it was kind of a very awkward thing. Um, so like. Last year in the election, I found out, like, because people called me.
Yeah.
This year, I found out because I had texted Terry to ask because I was concerned about knowing that I was gonna have to be at the meeting the next day.
Yeah.
And I I had to come in at eleven thirty at night. Um, to be sworn in because Terry was not gonna be here Wednesday. Had I not, like, what if I had just gone to bed or couldn't have come in that night?
Yeah, and I, and I think the other solution that probably is the select board might not have called a meeting the day after the elections, because I remember. I was in a little similar situation where I came in. Uh, I was at, I was working in Sanisfield when I came back on lunch break to get sworn in. Because if you only find out eighteen hours before, and you're supposed to do other certain things, right, like the open meeting law training and. So it is a little bit hectic and and I'm not opposed entirely to. Getting some clarity on if we can set a policy and if we should. Um, I have my reservations about the select board getting involved with that kind of thing. Uh, but as far as select board meetings the day after election, we could also maybe change that policy.
I honestly, I would be okay with the clerk setting a policy.
Yeah.
And having it clear to everyone who's running for office what that, what they can expect. Um, within X hours, we'll receive an email, within X days, we'll receive a letter. I mean, like, some clarity. Um, because sometimes it doesn't matter, right? When I was appointed to the ZBA board, there was no immediate need and you have plenty of time to get sworn in, but. And your point is well taken, like, if the select board didn't hold the meeting the day after the election, there'd be a little breeze in the.
Yeah, and I think also, you know, most people in that meeting. They don't have time to know what's going on and generally, so maybe it it might make sense to. We can, we can try and remember that in August or whenever we hold the selection.
But I still think that it's it's like, not polite, but it would be good for people running for office to know what their expectation is. That they they don't have to just come and look at what the posted numbers are, that they'll be informed whether they won, whether they lost, what the cap was. Um, and. What they expected, like, that seems courteous to me. And even if the court sets the policy themselves, I'd just like that us to ask the court to set the policy and to then keep it.
Gotcha. Alright, so, and then the next item, a big one is in appointment and engagement of town council. So at this point. We have a a lot of, we have five different routes. Um, I did ask KP Law if they would be willing to continue as town council. I didn't get a response, which is pretty clear to me.
I think so.
Um, it sounds like Jeremiah Pollard was interested in coming back at. Uh, his rate. And then we had three. Uh. Proposals that we interviewed for, me, Tyler Manacosta, Myers and Harrington, and Leonard Copelman. We did those interviews. Uh, earlier this week and last week. And I felt like we had plenty of time to ask questions and learn about people, and then we also had a chance to check references.
You were gonna um call the Copelman people, what kind of feedback did you get?
So I made calls today, this this morning afternoon, and I, the only. Person to pick up the phone was South Hadley to speak about um me, Tyler Manacosta.
Oh, okay.
Um, which they had, the woman was a town administrator and she had been there for a half a year. But she had worked previously, this is not her first time being involved in municipal government. And she was very happy with me, Tyler Manacosta, felt like she was getting a very, a a variety of attorneys who all were. Did a good job. They were on a flat fee agreement, um, which was much higher than Monterey.
Yep.
But. They. She was, she was, she was happy with, she was happy with them.
Um, so I called a bunch of people, both for Myers and Harrington and for, um. MTC. Um. So let me, like, I called all of the people. I quote this, I was a little over the top. I didn't reach everybody.
Yeah.
Um, so here's how I would sum it up. Um, nobody really had anything bad to say about either group. Um, I would say they were a little, a few people were more measured regarding Donna and Myers and Harrington. Um, but for instance, um. I talked to a woman named Casey Cato in Wellesley. Um, she's worked with both Donna and Tom Harrington. Uh, since twenty sixteen, said they were very knowledgeable, responsive, calm, gets to problems and finds solutions, professional, these are the words that I just wrote down, like keywords. Um. Keep current, um, their legal, now, a lot of the communities I've talked to have had their legal expenses skyrocketing. Many of them for usually land use issues. Um, one of them has a pipeline they're fighting, so like, there were lots of different reasons for what was causing those costs. Um. Um, they had a lot of records requests and various other things. Um. I would say that all, like, the list of people for MTC was long. Um, also, I did notice that both groups do have some retainers, but all retainers are a whole lot more than what we have right now.
Yeah, and so it sounded to me like me, Tyler Manacosta was willing to offer a flat fee agreement to Monterey. And it sounded like, from my recollection of our interview with Brewer from Myers and Harrington, they were not willing to offer a a flat fee agreement, right?
Um, that was my impression too. I will also tell you that, um, my general feeling about me, Tom and Acosta. Like, overall, that what I just read was very positive. I would say every single person I talked to for me, tell me, Acosta. Was about that positive. You didn't, did you print out those like?
I sent them to Justin in a.
Okay, okay. I don't know if you had a chance to look at those, but.
Yeah, I saw some.
Um, that that, those like kind of summed up a consistent pattern. And it was true for people that were working mostly with Jay, it was true for people that were working mostly with Adam. Um, I talked to several people that had worked extensively with Kate on labor issues and. Um, I would say she even got more glowing responses. Um, I'm trying to, a guy I talked to from Ashland today said that, um. She was, because one of the specific questions I asked, are are they able to deliver their information in a non-legal accessible format? And he basically said that during COVID, they felt like she absolutely, they have a lot of employees, same here for us. Just was super on top of what the changes were because things kept changing, were very clear on what they needed to do to fulfill the needs. We're dealing with, you know, family leave and COVID leave and, um, all the shifts that occurred, so it was pretty glowing. Um, and that, I I have to say, it was kind of a consistent pattern, um, that they're timely and responsive. Several people did raise the issue that they are growing and they're worried about what that's gonna mean, they haven't seen a change. But they were just saying, like, this is something to be aware of, people were really nice, actually, they were really, like, worried your needs, there was a lot of. I I felt supported by a bunch of strangers running other towns, I was kind of surprised, um. And a bunch of them do have flat fees, so like, they're all much bigger towns of the year, right? Thirty-five hundred a month without litigation, five K a month with litigation. Um, was kind of what most of them were giving me.
I think. One thing, we would be in a good position to ask for a a flat fee agreement. I mentioned this the other day.
Right.
Um, but we have a certain amount of money allocated from town meeting.
Yep.
For the fiscal year next year. And. They will be aware of that if we ask. Um, I guess I'll just come out and say that my preference would be. You know, based on the interviews and whatever that I've learned about the firms, I think my preference would be to go with me, Tylerman.
Mine too.
And also, my preference would be to ask them if they'd be willing to. Uh, make a flat fee agreement. Um, I'm afraid. I think we could, I think we want to have a judicious, right, and careful use of council regardless of if we have a flat fee or hourly rate. Uh, absolutely, but I'm afraid that, you know, one busy month. Would really set us back if we were work, if we had an hourly, because we have a very small legal budget compared to these other towns and. We don't necessarily have very small or few legal questions, right? And we don't, we want to eliminate any frivolous questions we don't need to ask, but I still think that the town on a regular basis has. Real qu- questions like a larger town does.
Yeah.
Just because we have a a smaller amount of people doesn't mean the the legal questions aren't there.
No, but there there's no collective bargaining issues, but there are some things that, but I totally agree with you. I I think it's a great idea to ask for it, um, whether they're willing to come in at our budget, I guess we'll have to see. How do we proceed? Do you as chair go talk to the S, call them and say we're interested in engaging for council, we want to try to negotiate a flat fee?
I I would.
Wouldn't do it right?
I would think that's what I, I I would email uh Costa.
Okay.
Right, and say that the select board had a discussion and we would like to appoint you as town council. And. We are requesting. A flat fee agreement or something along those sort of things.
Um, and and I think we should say also mention that, A, we don't have any union negotiations and that it would exclude litigation.
Yes, yeah. I think, and that's something that, you know, I'm surprised frankly that towns have flat fee agreements that include litigation, but it's.
Including, me too.
It didn't seem to be uncommon.
The other thing that, um, several of them mentioned were that their flat fees included monthly office hours, where the attorney was. Basically coming to the town, of course, these are towns that are much closer.
Yeah.
Um, and is available for any of the department heads to ask some questions, I don't really think we need that.
Yeah.
It seems more, like, more than maybe, but I just thought it was interesting that they were offering it.
Yeah. So. I think we should probably make a motion and I would motion that. I as chair will reach out to me, Tylerman and Costa by email. And tell them that the Monterey Select Board would like to appoint and engage them as town council. And we are hoping to agree on a flat fee payment plan rather than hourly.
Excluding, excluding litigation.
Excluding litigation, let me write that down, just, excluding litigation and.
Noting that we have no union.
Noting that we have no union contracts. Um, and that's my motion.
I second.
Is there any public discussion before we open the motion? Uh, Susan?
Uh, yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries and I will reach out to them tonight or tomorrow in the first thing.
Excellent.
Uh, because we would like to know next week, really.
Let's get it done, that would be awesome.
Okay. The next item, number eight, discussion employee mediation process and potential mediator candidates.
So, I have tracked down two, um. Two different mediation groups that are in Western Mass, both recognized by the state. Um, there are others, but they're all on the eastern part of the state, so it would be a much bigger deal. Um, first one is called Quaden Mediation and if you like, I can send a follow-up email with these details, so, but. Um, the man's name was Bob Sekule, S-E-K-U-L-E. Um, he's a mediation director, he had, they have in fact worked in other towns with conflicts. He described the processes follows, um, he said there's usually two mediators in a situation like this. Um, he would want at least one of them to be a woman, because the other one would be him. Um, he would talk on the phone to both parties, like, if we went forward with it. Um, prior to the interview, to get an overview of the issues and a picture of the process and to ascertain their willingness to proceed. Um, then they would, um, come, it would be in person. Uh, they often do have private sessions with each parties, um, including a pre-mediation interview. Um, they'll sometimes do breakout sessions if their issues arise during the process where they'll talk to each person separately for maybe ten minutes. Um, they charge by this session, it's been their experience, they usually manage to come to a conclusion of some kind in one session, although occasionally it requires more. Um, at the end of the process, they would, um, have a sort of written contract, what would be helpful going forward. Um, they charge two hundred dollars a session and that's an all-in-one fee that includes case management and any phone calls. Um, and includes the written agreement between parties. Um, he said that parties don't always agree to sign, but many do. So that, that was number one, and of course, I told him I would be explaining the process and it might be involved interviews, so.
And that's just a flat fee, two hundred dollars per session?
Per session with a likelihood of max two sessions.
Mm-hmm.
Option number two is the Berkshire Regional Public Housing Authority has mediators. Um, which, I was like, really? For for something like this, but yep, they call it a community-based mitigation and they have done it before. Um, they are on an hourly rate at three fifty an hour. The process sounds quite similar, the woman's name is Andrea Shulver. Um. They get the, they have a pre-mediation telephone interview, they get the parties to sign an agreement to participate at the first meeting. Um, preferably in person, which I was, thought was real important. Um, talk about why they're coming to the table, wanting to move forward with consensus about how to move forward in the future. Um. They would probably use one mediator, uh, only use two when there's a lot more people involved. Um, they will also sometimes hold side conferences with individuals if things are kind of stalled. Same basic idea. Um, usually, they find that a single day, um, a possibly a few hours, that was her word, but I don't know, like, you know, that can mean two or five, I don't know. Um, in one day, sometimes it requires a break and a further meeting, it's hard to know before you get started in the process and you also exit with a signed agreement. Um, the mediation process is confidential, but they let everybody know that the agreement can be made public, which would clearly be important in this, which is. That's the sense I had from the other parties too, so.
I would imagine there would be exemption under the public record law if we need to observe, uh, but I don't, I I'm not sure.
I think the mediation, well, the public record law wouldn't apply to something between two employees, I don't think.
Pretty much everything that I'm aware of, if it passes through your hands as part of official town business.
Right.
Um, it does, but I I I don't.
I suspect the process is private.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's exemptions under the public record law to allow for processes like this.
Um, if I had to go with my gut hunch at this moment, I would probably go with the guy from Quaden.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's based just on my perception of his, um, manner and ethic. Um, they're all, they also have to be cheaper, but my my main reason wasn't that, it's that he. Um, he had the right feel to me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is a very, that's an odd thing to say, but you have to base those decisions on something and.
Yeah.
I felt like he, they have the experience, they do a lot of mediation in a lot of different settings, um, he's their head mediator. Um, UMass has used Quaden for a bunch of trainings, um, I found there, I found both places by talking to the UMass ombudsman. Um, who, and she she also sent me, believe it or not, the Collins Center and, um, a couple of places in Boston. Um. But these guys are close and could do it in person, which I think would be very helpful.
Yeah. Okay, and so. The, I guess the question's how, the question how to proceed on this, I think funding is one consideration.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from what you described, it does sound like Quaden is the preferable firm. Um, but I I would probably follow up, you know, just me personally.
Yeah, go for it.
And then, I guess we have to request a. Engagement, I don't know if we have to request an engagement, I I.
That's, I I suspect, I don't know.
Or they just, we hire them and then they send an invoice afterward.
I I suspect, but do you want Bob's, his, his phone number?
Thank you.
You bet.
Um. And then funding.
Oh, and that's the email.
Secule. Is that, oh, at the end?
Uh, C Y C L O two four at gmail dot com.
Is, um, funding, I guess is one question, but could we use? What money could we use?
Well, I would think we could use the unrestricted HR monies, we could use.
Which would, but those wouldn't be open till July one.
What about the monies that we set aside for last year?
Those, Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but the the item is called shared HR manager.
Okay.
And we had justified, we had justified the handbook to the extent that it could.
Okay.
Ultimately go towards the shared process, at the same time.
Right.
Um.
You have select board expenses.
You have select.
I I'm thinking for, how much is in that account? I think it's giving too much, but I.
No, well, thank you for doing that. Research, there's some, you know, ideas that have been tossed around for a long time that have not been acted on yet, so, thank you for looking into it.
I was really pleased to find even too candid, right, and I don't think either of them are bad, I just like, took it easy.
Yeah.
Do you have a little over two thousand in there right now? I mean, I think.
I think it's important.
Yeah, I do too, and I think we'd be probably looking at two to four hundred.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, he clearly was hoping he could do it in two, but.
Yeah. Alright, and so I will reach out to him and put on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
Um. And I don't, I don't know if we'll have to have a written agreement with him or if he can come into a board meeting. Or next week's call under next week's board meeting potential, um, just so that we can hire him with a clear understanding of. You know, we'll hire you up to two hundred dollars or hire you up to four, six or eight hundred dollars, um, and be clear on what.
I'd say we should put it in line.
What work he's doing, yeah, um.
I mean, I would even say after you talk to him and you have, you know, maybe get the center in the map, you know. Is it reasonable to commit to up to two sessions and we can always, if we thought it was gonna be helpful.
Yeah.
And he felt it would be helpful, I had the sense that sort of like, if it be more than two sessions, it may not be solvable.
Well, and they, and we may need to come back at some point, but the point being, and ultimately, you know, we'll have to make this decision as a board remote meeting. Um, to to hire him, but it sounds like the money is generally available and it's a, it's a recommendation.
I guess I just don't think, like, it's not necessary for him to be there at the meeting, if.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, I'll ask him, uh, to, yeah.
I don't let, he can draft a letter, engage him now.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think he necess, you're right, I don't think he necessarily needs to be there, but. Uh. I'll, I'll, I'll give him the call.
Okay.
Um. Speaking of select board expenses, um, this is kind of. Do you have a, is there any comments from the public? Ellen?
I just don't, this is for individual employees in town hall to mediate, is that what it's for me?
Yes, that is the.
And you already know that these employees are capable to mediation.
That's the first step of the mediation process is to, um, we've asked them previously. Uh, and at that time, they said yes, but the first step in the mediation process, once we have engaged the mediator, is for them to speak to each of the parties. And confirm that they're willing to participate in mediation, which won't occur if they're not willing to participate.
I'm sorry, which will what?
Which I, if someone won't participate, then we don't have mediation process, but at that point, there may be other issues, correct?
And you have a higher level. Yeah.
But, you know, the thing is, Ellen, you can bring the horse to water, but if you stick its head in the trough, you rarely succeed in getting it to drink.
Well, I just don't, you don't want to pay somebody to come and then find.
They won't come because there'll be a phone in.
I get it, okay.
They're, they're very, um, they work a lot in the public sector and, um. I mean, they do, he said they do have private clients, but it's a different fee scale, they've worked with lots of municipalities before. Um, they're very cognizant of the limited budget, um, I definitely had the sense for them that that they would not charge us if we did not go for it.
Yeah, it's not like a lot of money, but still, it seems like a waste that has.
There's no reason to spend money if there's no mediation.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Uh, Mickey?
I I just wanted to say, I like the idea that they would have one man and one woman.
Me too.
You know, because you get a different perspective and, uh, I I thought that was sort of, I think that hit me right away as being a a nice point.
And and he offered it, like, it wasn't, the other person was a woman, so maybe she didn't know it was necessary, but.
She knew she didn't need it, but it's the guy who did, so, okay.
Okay, so I think that settles that, and on a related note, we had talked about, um, doing interviews for. Uh, handle, depending on how the.
That's tomorrow?
HR director interviews are.
The HR interviews are tomorrow.
Okay, and when will we know roughly if we have a candidate this round?
Hope tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, but I mean, will an offer be made and they'll accept or deny as to.
Well, we'll, I will all discuss who we like and then make an offer, I imagine it might, it might be a couple of days before we know if the person accepts or not.
Okay.
It sounds like by next week we'll know.
Yeah.
Okay.
In your class.
Yeah, I know, right?
So that's, and and depending how that goes, we will or will not do those interviews.
And, um, I raised this with Melissa too, um, that I had in my conversation with Steve Bannon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, who's, for those of you who don't know, he's the chair of the select board of Great Barrington. Um, they, they got their town manager and I don't, it might be their chief of police, I'm not sure, there was one other person, but I don't remember who it is. Um, for a head hunting agency, uh, in the Boston area, which, um, when I checked them out, I was kind of wowed. Um, they're all people that had twenty or more years of experience in town government. Um, mostly as town managers, town administrators, um, and a variety of other positions. The head guy basically, um, was gonna retire and he thought, I'm not really gonna retire yet. He thought, oh, well, I'll start a consulting firm and boom, the demand was enormous and. The desire, they do a bunch of different things, but, um, the head hunting part is really useful because they have so many connections. To lots and lots of towns, um, and my thought was that if this round fails. Especially since Barrington would probably still be, they're still looking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one possibility would be to talk to the Barrington Select Board about trying to use that firm to help us recruit viable tenants.
Yeah. Was that a budget, uh?
Right.
Okay. Sure, oh, okay, good. Okay, so that wraps up that agenda item and we move on to draft town organizational flow chart. And so I, I understand this is a flow chart that was, that has not been adopted. And so I, I understand this is a flow chart that was, that has not been adopted yet. But that is something that we could do to clarify the structure of the government. So I, there's two copies.
Right, I think this is.
It was difficult to see here in the way it formatted, so I thought you might as compare.
Yeah. So.
I, I approve of that.
Yeah.
For various reasons.
Yeah.
And really, the only other thing that's different was just so like you hung this under, the appointments made by them, that makes sense. Our, our, what would you call it, our AA?
Select Board Secretary.
Our secretary would answer only to us, which makes sense to me. But, I mean, is there any reason that that person would have?
No, I mean, I just threw it on there, just, no. And I will say, I think that there's still some things that are left unclear from this.
Okay, go, what?
Because, and I don't know if it's worth noting, but there are some appointed bodies that are more or less responsive to the Select Board, I think by design. Like we make three-year conservation commission appointments, and the conservation commission has to follow.
Their own, yeah.
You know, Wetlands Protection Act, not, they don't work at the will of the Select Board in that sense. Whereas we, we appoint a Lake Garfield working group just to, just for our own purposes to advise us on lake health issues. And so I don't know if that's worth even noting that there's kind of, in some ways.
They're more independent.
That different level, but like the transfer station committee is solely an advisory committee, right? And they work at the will of the Select Board to help advise.
Where would the bylaw committee fall on that now?
Oh, I like that.
Now they're elected, right?
Yeah, so there, I actually wrote, just to be clear, I wrote every elected board position. Which there's actually not a whole ton. And then sometimes.
That, that is a lot, that's a lot, that lists us off. Board of Health, Bylaw Review Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, Cemetery Committee, Finance Committee, Laboring Trustees, Moderator, Park Commission, Planning Board, Tree Warden, School Committee Representative and Constable. That's actually quite a few.
Yeah, and the, and then the other, I had a few other small questions, like the building inspector, there are other building officials. And maybe actually Melissa, I don't know if you know how the building official interacts with the electrical inspector and the plumbing and gas inspector, you know, should they be listed on here as working under him?
Yeah, I'll add them under there.
Okay. But, I mean, I think it's generally would be a good thing to have.
Okay, I, you're not gonna get any objections from me, it may be a work in progress, but I, from my perspective, as this stands, that seems to include most of the things that are relevant.
Yeah, I mean, I think for the most part, I also changed voters to town meeting, but we can, that one.
Um, I, I don't have a strong feeling either way. I, I mean, I, I, to me, the most important one is that the, you know, if we're gonna have annual, everybody having the HR director answer only to the Select Board isn't important, because it, it gives some, uh, it gives us the ability to interact with the town administrator through an HR person instead of an open meeting, which I think is a useful thing, because it gives us another tool.
So, and are there any? Should we take another week to review this before adopting it? Should we kick it around until we have a HR director? I don't think we need to have an HR director to adopt it, I think it's.
Well, we could adopt it, and if there's a problem with it, we can amend it.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's true.
I mean, it's not like if we adopt something, it can never be changed.
That's true.
Um, and we may well end up amending it when we have an HR director.
Yeah. So, are we?
I'm okay with it.
Okay with this as it is?
Yeah.
Could we get a clean copy, please, Melissa, with the, just with the building officials under building inspector?
If they belong there?
Building, what would we call them?
I'll put an alternate building staff, electrical inspector, plumbing and gas inspector.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a wiring one too?
That's the electrical.
Electrical, right, of course, sorry.
The wiring inspector by law. So, before they.
Okay. So, what are we up to now? We're just waiting for that so we can.
Yeah.
We are, we are cranking through it, Justin. I'm excited.
Yeah, I'm hoping. I'm hoping for the flat fee agreement, but if they don't offer one, they will own the people who are willing to offer one, so we've tried our best.
Yeah.
I, well, and I'm sure they'll offer one, it's just whether or not we can.
Afford it.
Afford it.
I mean, admittedly, the ones they have in other towns, it's a much bigger budget.
Do you think that I should mention, and they could find this information pretty easily if they wanted to, but do you think in the email to me, tell them that I should mention what our budget is at account?
Probably. I, I think you did mention it in our, I, I know that I mentioned it when I had my initial conversation with Adam Costa asking him to submit.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so I have a motion to accept this, what's called a organization, organizational flow chart for the town government?
Second.
Any public comment on that?
Anybody wanna see it? The library is at the end. You're elected, well, the library board is elected anyway. That's a good question, if the library board is elected, the employees of the library answer to the elected library board, correct?
Absolutely. Do you have another one of those?
I don't.
No, I'll just do, I'll do it today.
Yeah, that's the only.
All right, so there's a motion to approve this diamond town organizational flow chart with a second. And I'll call a vote, so Susan?
Yes.
And Justin, yes. And we have approved this flow chart. Let me just initial that, please.
Make sure you put it up. Don't pick it up as it. All right, next up.
Okay. The next item is draft Select Board policy regarding written follow-up letters to conversations between the Select Board, employees, other town boards or committees, and any other persons that may so require. So I think it's a good idea, I always like putting things in writing, because I think it may matters more clear. As much on the Select Board, let me just read it.
Yep, go ahead. Do you guys want me to read it aloud to you? When the Select Board meets with other boards, commissions and committees, employees and any other as deemed necessary in a public meeting, and matters of consequence are discussed, the Select Board may draft a letter of understanding to the other party or parties, clarifying the Select Board's understanding of the substantive issues of that meeting and clearly identifying any actions which must be undertaken by the various parties involved. While we recognize that the meeting minutes will mention the matters discussed, we feel that this is a clear and direct way of clarifying our understanding of the important matters addressed. This process allows for clear communication and ensures that all parties are fully aware of any subsequent responsibilities and timelines. In matters pertaining to employees, this also allows for a clear transfer of information to the employees' files.
Why does it say may?
Um, because we meet with a lot of people and sometimes we might not feel that we need to have a follow-up letter. Um, I, I think that that should be a matter of discretion, do we wanna draft a follow-up letter for every single conversation?
If matters of consequence are you said, correct?
Right, but we have to pick what we, that means that it's our discretion, what's a matter of consequence.
So this may or may not happen depending on what you decide with each, with each person.
Correct, yeah, okay. I mean, I, I think it's generally a good idea, just like we want in writing what we're gonna say to council. But I, I think it's important to have may because you don't need to do that for every single thing.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I like the idea of, of, of putting things in writing to make expectations clear. I would like the, the week to review this just before, before adoption.
Okay.
And I also, I wonder the extent to which having a policy will help us? To the extent that we can draft letters that we want to without a policy in place? And we can have a policy in place and, and not do it?
Right.
But if it, if it in some ways helps us feel like we are being more clear with our expectations, then I think that's a good thing. Where do we think, you know, it would be, would it be posted on the Select Board website? Or we, would we just have it for our own review? We could put on the town policies, uh, staff page, I'm just wondering.
That's a good question.
You know, to the extent that the policy is, is available, is the extent in which we can be held accountable to it or reference it? Um, if we just adopt it and it.
Do we wanna amend the code of conduct to include it? Or should it be a separate thing?
I think it should be a separate thing, I mean, each board probably has their own understandings of how.
Right.
Of how to conduct themselves, and I think putting things in writing and making expectations clear is a good thing.
Okay. But you're right, this is something we can do, but I still think, I, I, sort of, it was my way of bringing up that I think it's a, it's a a procedure we should put into play on the regular.
Yeah, so why don't I, I'll take the week to review it and then come back next week to it. Or the following week and fill you this. But I, like I said, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Um, we discussed the Memorial Day parade.
Yep.
Already, and you're gonna up for Wolfheart, and I might look for some children.
Awesome.
To help carry reads to the appropriate places.
Always used to do that.
They always.
It used to be the kindergarten.
Nadia.
Nadia's not a child so much.
No. Oh, you mean little children you were with, yes?
Yes.
I used to have the kindergarten kids.
Oh, that's cute.
I don't know how, but my daughter got to do it twice, and she wasn't, she didn't get left back in kindergarten.
Well, my sister went to the Monterey Schoolhouse for three years, early kindergarten, kindergarten, and they did first grade. So.
Oh, good, that makes sense.
When the tennis was dwindling, because I think I had sixteen in my class and she had like six. So, I don't know what we did wrong.
I can pet your children? I mean.
It was one year apart.
Oh, okay, wow, oh my goodness.
One year that happened.
Oh, wow, boom, okay.
Baby.
Okay, so.
No pet, not a power elf? Or storms?
We're moving on to correspondence minutes and public comment section of the meeting. And just for clarification, as far as minutes go, we're tabling five eighteen and five twenty-three until next week. And I was given permission to approve the five-four executive session minutes by myself, as amended by myself, which I did. And let me just initial that, but these are not for distribution at the moment. Which is dated twenty-second?
Uh, twenty-fifth. Yep, twenty-fifth.
Okay, but we're gonna do the other six minutes, so then you drafted a letter to the town clerk.
I did.
About related to our conversation last week. So let me review it.
He doesn't care about wire.
I just wanna know if he's leaving, are you leaving?
I'm standing because I have bad back.
Oh, okay, I know you have a bad back, I know.
It's not so like work.
And we could change it to sex on this first?
Yeah. Actually, you know what, this letter is, might take me a little while to edit, so why don't we do that at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Um, and because I know that we have one comment and question. Been waiting any longer, sorry.
Sorry, hello.
Hello? You would like to speak to us about cell service and internet service?
I would.
At the end of Bear Town Mountain Road?
On Bear Town Mountain Road, not just the end of Bear Town Mountain Road. And I reached out to Melissa to find out what, what possibilities and what we need to, to find out what's going, excuse me, what's going on. And she, you wrote back, she said that she had spoken, written, or spoken to the two of you, the two of you suggested I speak to Smitty and Heinz.
So, yeah, I think my, my understanding of it was that we met with Adam Chee, a fiber connect, which the town has an ex, has a contract with two wire fiber internet and two homes, including all of Bear Town Mountain Road, right? And the last time that we spoke with him, a few months ago, he said that he is hoping, he is still planning on wiring everything he agreed to wire. And he was waiting on National Grid and Verizon.
I have an update on that, I met with him this morning at eight-thirty, and he said that all the make-ready has been approved. Now the next step is for National Grid and Verizon to schedule the work that needs to be done, whether it's moving wires up or down, um, which he said he found it could take anywhere from two months to two years.
Oh, yeah.
He did say that the contract says six months, which they potentially can push, but wait to see what happens. He is going to be applying for a couple of pole petitions as well, but he's not quite ready.
For the pole petition?
Um, for him to erect some poles.
Ah, okay. Interesting.
I heard this too, so two months, two years means nothing to us down at the end of Bear Town Mountain Road when we neither have mobile service or internet, and every other day we lose our landline. So there are a number of people living at the end of Bear Town Mountain Road who are in the category of senior citizens, and we are at risk not being able to get in touch with emergency vehicles should we have a problem.
Hello, is that Verizon?
It's the Verizon landline, not Verizon.
No, that, I know, um, because, you know, for me, it's an issue that these companies have the poles and are refusing to maintain them properly and try and get, they're finally agreeing to it, but it took this long because they, they wanted someone else to pay for maintaining the poles. They clearly are failing because you're not getting adequate service, even from Verizon, never mind internet.
You know, with all due respect, this is not my area of expertise. I, I've tried my best, Ellen knows, I've tried my best with Verizon to approve our landline service on the road to some degree. Might have succeeded, I might not, you know, I'm not, this is, this is not my area, okay? The town did sign a contract with Adam Chee. If he is being constrained by Verizon and, and/or National Grid, I think it behooves the board to speak to Adam. If he is being constrained by Verizon and, and/or, uh, National Grid, I think it behooves the board to speak to Adam. And/or, uh, uh, Hines or Peggy Telly. So if, if you don't mind my, uh, being a little bit facetious. I imagine what the conversation might have been, I've spoken to Smitty and I know Smitty, second call, that's not the problem. I imagine what the conversation might have been like if I called Smitty to say, hey, Smitty, one more time, we don't have internet. So I, I, I tried to walk my, my, myself through this. As you've experienced before, you teach, you try and imagine which way the class is gonna go. So I, I thought of this great knock-knock joke. You, you're all familiar with knock-knock joke? I, I, I don't, I don't wanna embarrass anybody, it, it could be an issue. You're familiar with knock-knock?
Yes.
Okay, one of the two of you saw one?
Knock-knock.
I, I'm not talking to you.
Knock-knock.
Who's there?
Uh.
Right, so I call Smitty and I say, Smitty, and he goes, and? Why are you calling me? I'm not Verizon, I'm not National Grid, I'm not the town of Monterey, I'm not Adam, I'm not Fiber Connect. Why are you asking me to intercede on a contract that was negotiated between Adam Chee and the town of Monterey? That's what I'm imagining, and I'm gonna go, knock-knock, it's gonna be embarrassing. Not that I'm afraid or intimidated to contact these people. But I just don't see that that's, first of all, my job, and I do believe that it's the board's job because I think earlier I heard you say that you're responsible for the administration of the town, and.
I, I would be happy, hello, to call both, uh, Peggy Telly and Hines.
Okay.
Um, I, I suspect that, um, neither are we in a position to intervene in a contract between, um, Adam Chee or Fiber Connect and, um, National Grid or Verizon. But both Verizon and National Grid are operating in the states of Massachusetts under provisions set forth by the legislature.
Right.
And, um, you know, there was a commitment, there was a commitment on behalf of the legislature and the governor to make sure that all residents of Massachusetts have access, and honestly, these two companies are, like, let's face it. Verizon isn't hurting for money, they're paying nice dividends, and they're paying their executives very well. And they could cut those numbers and actually get the bill done.
Okay, Susan, Susan, let me, let me.
But I don't think the legislature's in position to actually influence their behavior, but I'll make the call.
Oh, I, let, let me, uh, let, let me turn the clock back. It must be around nine months when the governor came to beckon to announce that today, all three hundred and fifty-one towns of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and let, let me finish this, are now wired up. That's what he said, which is clearly fictitious. He said, for those towns who are still having trouble with connectivity through National Grid and Verizon, we have no control over that. You can go back to the tape on this. We're not gonna get anywhere with these people who hide behind all their characters. Adam does have, I spoke to Adam about this, Adam does have a clause in his contract that requires after he's paid that they must do the work within six months.
The problem is.
And they don't, and then what happens? It's, they continue not to do it, and there is no enforcement. I think there was a discussion, I think you were the one actually talked about, you know, there are rules and with, with respect to bosses and employees. And if the employee, if the employee is not responsible, if the boss is not going to enforce the implicit or explicit contract. The same thing here, there is nobody out there with deep enough pockets to enforce Verizon and, and, uh, and National Grid to perform on this, on this contract.
Probably not, but I don't think Adam Chee can make it hap, make it happen either. Do, can I get a copy of the contract we have with Verizon?
So I, I, Don, let me just, let me just finish and I'd be happy to, uh, receive the floor. I, 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 we are at risk. We are at risk. These haven't, he has a bad back, but he's also a neighbor, and, uh.
Speak for yourself.
That we're neighbors.
No, I'm not at risk.
Ellen is at risk with me.
Speak for yourself, I feel like I'm at risk, but I have phone service.
Right.
So if I had to, like today, call for an emergency vehicle, wouldn't work. Wouldn't work, couldn't even walk to my neighbor because it's more than a quarter of a mile. So if I had an emergency, that would be the end. And I think that's, uh, uh, a sad, a sad thing for me to say in the year twenty-twenty-two, okay? In the town of Monterey that has a contract for internet. I, I would absolutely venture a, a bet that if they went to the Chestnut Hill Tower and turned that thing one degree, you and I wouldn't be having this discussion that we would have all cell service in the world, but they're not willing to do that either. We have nothing. We have nothing. And I'm. Now, do I get a chance? We're unfinished. I'm getting hungry. That's also not my problem.
No, it's mine. Not because he's hungry. Go ahead.
I had dinner at six o'clock, so.
I hear you.
Um, I, I am, I'm imploring on the board to represent the residents of the town and try and get something moving. And without hearing two months to two years, I think that's sad, I do.
What about the other end of that?
So we've heard. What's that?
The, there, there were some.
On the road.
Other people, yeah.
So there's some houses that are excluded from the fiber connector contract that are never guaranteed. Fiber connector, any internet from the town.
Okay.
Is, are you guys the last ones on?
They are part of the ninety-six or ninety-seven percent.
We're supposed to get it.
The last, the last time that Adam came in, he said that there are a number of stretches of road. Bear Town Mountain Road is not the only road, at least at that time, that he had yet to do.
Uh-huh.
Um, but.
He's actually for me completed the second, um, phase of it. I have that document for you guys to accept next week.
So if he, I mean, if at some point it makes sense for the board of Adam Chee to come and, and talk to this, um, and.
And if you don't mind, invite me at the same time, I don't know, he's a busy guy, so I don't know when he's, uh, able to come.
Right.
I would like to hear it myself. I, I, I know Adam, I, we work with Adam, we, we, we like Adam. I have to believe that his hands are tied, and I think that the town has to come, like, another source here. And I'm imploring the board to work on their behalf. So, do I get a chance?
Okay, so, uh, thank you, well, and Don, as well.
The big news that you're overlooking tonight is that they've reached agreement. That was the, remember, I'm the one who negotiated all this, so I, I know all about it. The biggest concern that NBI has was that Adam was resistant, completely resistant to agreeing that he would have all the lines in by a date certain. And his reason for that was because he doesn't control it. It's controlled by, finally, by the two utility companies. NBI wanted a provision that they would agree on the pole issues by a certain date. Adam couldn't agree to that because he couldn't control. So the fact that now he's at agreement on those issues is big news. That's big news. That means that it is going to go through, talk about when, but it's going to go through, that he will get the benefit of the million dollars. And that the town will have about ninety-nine percent of people attached, uh, to the wire. And the state obligation was only ninety-six percent.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not a question now of putting any pressure on or working on Adam. If the board's gonna do anything, it's the two utilities, it's getting them to do the work. There's nothing that Adam can do to get them to do the work.
There you go, Don. Nikki?
Uh, hello, you said your landline is not reliable?
That's correct.
That's the one that would concern me more.
Oh.
Because that's, that's a utility. I think the cell service and the, uh, internet kind of fall on the more gray areas. But I think because of its longevity, maybe because it's been around for so long, that the, having your landline. I know I had problems with my line because if it gets so staticy, you couldn't, you couldn't talk. Eventually, I spoke to somebody in West Virginia, and then I called again, and I was talking to somebody in New Jersey. And he looks at my line, I'm, I'm calling, I'm calling Verizon.
Right.
He looks at my line, oh, yeah, I see what the problem is, and well, I will just reroute you, that didn't do anything.
Right.
And, and your, your phone will now come in from, instead of coming straight from Great Barrington, it actually comes from the firehouse. And my line is fine, and I have not had a problem since then. But it was a matter of always going to that landline, and that landline, that's, that's the one I, that's like having your electric power, having your landline. I think the other two kind of fall a little more like, we really wanna have these things today.
With all due respect, business is now.
Oh, it's all cell phone, yes.
It's all, and, and cellphone, and we're running the cellphone, it's all on Zoom, you know, some other version of what we have here.
But I'm, I'm talking about your personal health and well-being, your safety, having a landline.
Right, and I agree with that. And, and Don mentioned that, you know, it is a, a, a big statement to hear that there's some sort of an agreement, big. As my mother, who's a very wise woman, used to say, when, when is very important. When the grass grows in the palm of my hand, I'll see internet, high-speed internet at the end of the road. The when is very important.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, as you know, I've been a teacher, and I teach not how much or when. Not if, but when, because when is very, very important.
Uh, Ellen Coburn.
So the bottom line is, is the emergency, for, for me, is the emergency, um, access to an ambulance or, you know. Um, because pillow's right, the landline, what happens is if it's raining or if there's a thunderstorm, then the landline goes out. And then we have no cell service, we have no internet, even with, you know, and we have no landline. And Verizon has said, I mean, we've been here forty-six years, and this has been going on for at least thirty. And Verizon has a list of, of our calls of every few months, every year. And they tell us that the box on Fairview is old equipment, that Verizon is refusing to rewire. But then supposedly Verizon did rewire from Great Barrington, right, hello? Was it this?
They rewired all the way from Great Barrington to the box on Fairview, rebuilt the Fairview box, and then Ellen called me to say I don't have a phone.
Yeah, so it didn't really work that well.
And, and I can't tell you how many times I was in that box with the guys, working to see the installers, the, the manager, and the entire director of all of Berkshire County. I have all their names and numbers. It's hopeless.
The technicians are very responsible, and they care about us, and they tell us, listen, it drives us crazy. We keep on asking higher-ups to, to do something for you, but they say this is outdated equipment, and there's not enough people living here. So the bottom line is, this is, he says he's not at risk. He's a very.
I didn't say I'm not.
Anybody's at risk.
Yeah, of course he's at risk. We all are, we're old, he's eighty-three and he has heart condition. So, so I went to your father, actually, one night, you were there, Justin, at the library, I don't know if you remember, and he was very helpful. Mark at the library said he would help me figure out that if there's a way with a cell phone that doesn't work normally.
Right.
To call nine-one-one.
Right.
And, and, and apparently that does work.
Right.
But it ta, goes all the way to Pittsfield or someplace north, and it's not that fast that they're gonna get to it. So my bottom line request to you is, is there any way that the firehouse or the police or anybody in Monterey has any kind of similar nine-one-one connection so that when I would call nine-one-one on this unworking cellphone, text, take, I take it back. It's a text, it's not a call, because I can't call. But I can text nine-one-one, and it supposedly goes through to some faraway place, then they have to come back in contact locally. I would like the board to find out, is there any way that I can text somebody in town with a nine-one-one request? Instead of trying to text, so I would just need a text number for whoever is the, um, emergency. You know, don't we have an EMT group in town that helps people in an emergency?
How does the, how does the heart department give it all though?
Oh, whoever, I just wanna know, who does somebody like me text, because I do have text, even when I have no landline or I have no phone. And who can we text to get help quickly if someone has a heart attack? That's my request.
Should we take on trying to find that out?
Yeah. I can.
Um, 'cause I, I also, I'm really concerned, like, it's upsetting to hear that Verizon's like, yeah, that equipment's so old. We know it doesn't work, and we don't have any desire to replace it. I'm sorry, what?
I know.
How about we turn off the electricity in your house, Mr. Chairman? Um, that, that really bothers me.
It's very upsetting, but, um.
It's not like I think that I'm gonna get any satisfaction from calling Verizon, but, um, it's not okay.
Susan, it's not the people who work here in the area, and I, I'm just letting you know.
No, 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 no. I, I know, it's not a technician issue.
I've, I've been dealing with this for years, okay?
It's, it's other line, no question.
It's the effort. The effort, yes.
It's the company making the decision not to spend the money to fix the equipment, they're responsible for maintaining it.
That's correct, okay?
And who comes to the house? Like, if, if someone in Monterey has a heart attack, who comes?
So, so thanks for raising these concerns, because I think they are very important and pressing. And Susan, why don't we come up with a plan of action so that we can address them?
Okay.
Um, is, is this something that you would be able to look into, you would like to look into?
Can we divide it up? Would you be willing to look into the nine-one-one, um, text emergency situation?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I can do that.
Um, and I'm gonna see, um, I will, I will call both Peggy Telly and Hines and see if they can give me some advice on how to approach, at the very least, Verizon. Because I, I feel like you guys are not part of.
And I think.
It's National Grid, it's, it's, it's National Grid.
The box is National Grid?
No, no, oh, you mean, you mean the landline.
The landline, I mean, I agree with you on the other issue too, but my first priority is that you guys need to have cell, uh, need to have landline service because that is emergent, and it is something, you know, it's like electricity, right? We, the country spent a lot of money to do rural electricity.
Oh, we lose electricity also.
We do, we lose electricity.
Well, neither National Grid nor Verizon are doing due diligence in their duty. And they're still making a ton of money and paying their investors a ton of money and their executives, and it's egregious. So the question is, can we hold them responsible for their responsibilities? Which would be replacing the equipment and replacing whatever line they need to, to get everyone on that road adequate phone service. So I will take on trying to.
We will welcome any effort you make on our behalf.
Yeah. And in the meantime, if there would be, like, a way that we could know, because you never know if something terrible happens.
No, so Justin's gonna look into the text emergencies, I believe.
But the texting on locally, who's on duty is all, you know, like, if we could just know who's on duty for, um.
It's usually a dispatcher, though?
I'm sorry.
Like, when you do nine-one-one, you usually go to a dispatcher?
Well, this is what I, I, they told me I shouldn't try to do it to test it out, that it, it isn't, it isn't appropriate to call it to test it. So I've never done it, you know, and I don't know if it really works, but I would like to know if it does.
I have, I have one more comment, if you don't mind. Janet just texted me, she said she's on. A blood report, she, for some reason, can't speak, so, um, she's asked me to share with you that she's now in Boston. That's where she is from Sunday night to Friday night. And because we have no working internet. I understand we have access at the firehouse, but it's intermittent, it's also intermittent at the library.
And apparently also in Boston.
Uh, I, I don't know what's going on in Boston. So it's, it's actually not only an issue of risk, which is a concern, but our lives. And we're separating them five out of seven days.
Yeah, you can't keep it. I tried to call the doctor, by the way, um, for some reason, five oh eight numbers don't work from my house.
Can you send me fixed?
Remember that? Well, this is what I was gonna tell you, um, I haven't tried that doctor yet, but he couldn't even understand why the five oh eight numbers weren't going through from my house to my doctor in, in Worcester. This is the kind of thing, now supposedly he's fixed that and I don't know.
He fixed it, I was broken when he fixed it.
But this is the thing, that it's so, it's so outdated, this equipment, you know? All I want is a nine-one-one number that works every day, that's all I want.
No, I think it's a fair request, thank you for raising your concern, and we have a plan.
Thank you, Justin, thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Justin, thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other?
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Don, for leaving early.
Yeah, he has his own car.
Bye, Michael. Bye, Michael.
It's Mary.
Uh, Mary? We can't hear you.
Okay, uh, how about now?
On the device?
I'm, I'm on my phone. I have the. Hi, so I know you're about to wrap up, I just, I was looking. Ellen, Ellen?
Do you have a microphone on or the volume down?
So we can't hear you, but, uh, we'll take your concerns at the next meeting.
That's funny. You can't hear me now? I have, I have the microphone on. You can't hear me now?
If you can hear me, text me with your comment, Mary.
Okay, all right, we'll have to take your concerns another time, but thank you.
That's a thing, getting laughed at, I'm normal.
All right, so now finally the letter.
Letter, yeah, let me edit. Um, Nikki, do you have any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay.
We got that, we're all business.
Uh, I'm editing a letter, which is unfortunate.
It's long, sorry.
Yeah, she's been editing for a little time.
I need to edit his initial suggestion. Oh, she signed off and signed on, yeah.
So I, I have done some editing, and why don't I read it to you? You stop, you can print it out if need be.
Go for it. Flat, hide verbally where you made a change. Do you want to email it to me and I'll just print it?
Yeah, why don't we?
That's a good idea.
Goodbye, goodnight.
Goodnight, goodnight.
Goodnight.
Thanks for the weather, nice meeting.
Thank you for joining us.
A lot of work done. We're plowing through it, yeah.
Yeah, no, not yet, I have to see if someone could find it.
Oh, I really know that feeling.
I just sent it, I don't know, sometimes it takes.
Oh, you basically rewrote it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's like a different letter, I guess we could have a discussion.
All right, I got one second.
I did it in track changes technically.
Yeah, I, I let me know.
Well, track change just doesn't, at some point.
I, I hear you.
So what do we decide? I'm doing the, I'm gonna look into the nine eleven texting. And you are going to reach out to elected officials.
Yep, and probably to, at the very least, Verizon.
And I know, I mean, this is something that's been raised, it's difficult. From everything that I've learned, you know, Verizon, it's not the future. Landlines, copper landlines or DSL aren't the future, which is unfortunate because some people rely on them for emergency services.
Yeah, I think that's.
Uh, they don't see it as profitable, and I'm sure if you want.
I mean, here's the thing, you know, like, it's not profitable. But sometimes a profitable company has to do something that isn't profitable because it's.
It's a public, yeah, it's a public, and, and I, and I understand that. And they, and the state to some degree understands that, sometimes someone left a jacket there.
Oops. Um, yeah, and the question is, you know, they are providing a service, but they, they are a utility company and they are regulated by the state, so. Okay, here we go.
Oh, one last thing, is the code of conduct possible?
I have it for you, it's lying there.
And the only change was that capitalized talent in meeting.
I did that.
Leaving on the desk.
Yeah. Otherwise I might start calling Ken, who used to like that all the time. Your mother wanted to say that you should check with Heather Barbary at Fairview Emergency Response Public Health. She may be able to get them Motorola pagers. Oh.
I'll look into that, on the nine eleven text.
I would like it to say in writing. I, I want, I, I don't wanna have a bunch of numbers thrown at me verbally.
Yeah.
I want to have those numbers in writing before the meeting so I have time to look at them and give them due consideration, because I don't think it's better to put on the spot and have to make a decision.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Right there, um, I think it's important that it be in writing.
Let me see what that is. So by the day before, the thirty-first? By two days before, I mean, that's Memorial Day.
But also, um, it needs to say, submit a proposal in writing. If it doesn't say anything in.
Yeah, let me see.
Right, right, right.
So this is the second to last paragraph, we request that you submit a proposal in writing for office hours, select for meeting.
By, I don't close the business on the thirtieth?
In advance.
Thirty days hasn't hurried, so thirty-first? So that would, that would give.
The thirty-first.
Yeah, because that would give Melissa time to get us the hours. I mean, immediately, I take them in, we'll get them during the day.
Thirty-one.
Am I getting? What? No, no, we're asking her to submit the hours, close business on the, on, yeah.
So I just, after, in the second to last paragraph, if you wanna do edits on your computer there, Melissa?
Me, okay, hang on. Second to last paragraph.
June one, select board meeting, comma, by May thirty-one, comma, so that the select board can formally establish office hours during that meeting? Is that, is that fair? And I added in writing, sorry. We request that you submit a proposal in writing for office hours for the June one select board meeting by May thirty-one. So that the select board can formally establish office hours during that meeting.
Okay. Um, sorry, then it says attend the June one sixteen, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
It's all by itself.
What's that?
It, it, you cross out the rest of the sentence, so it now just reads attend the June first, six P M.
Uh, sometimes it does weird things sometimes.
Okay.
Um, that's not how it reads, it's another thing.
So that, that's just complete, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, that's weird, so, um, so you wanna keep, we also formally request that you attend, right?
I have written, we request that you submit a proposal in writing for office hours for the June one select board meeting by May thirty-one so that the select board can formally establish office hours during that meeting.
And then the, you want her to attend? But it doesn't say anything about attending the meeting? Because it's all state lines, it's all crossed up? So do we?
Submit a proposal in writing for office hours for the June one select board.
I mean, I, I think she should be present here while we're discussing.
And attend, yeah, I'm gonna submit a proposal, uh.
So we can just stop talking during the meeting?
And attend, and attend that.
We ask that you all, we also ask that you attend that meeting.
Yeah.
Do we wanna set a specific time now? Like, do we wanna just address her first and her first billing so we can?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we need to, I mean, we could set.
Because that's why she has to sit here all the time.
Yeah, so why don't we just make.
So we can, we can make it six thirty, we can make it seven, but I think we should set a time so that she doesn't have to sit here during the meeting.
Yeah, so six P M is good.
Okay.
If we know already have someone scheduled for that.
Do we have any? I figured if you talk to counsel, you can tell him six thirty if they need to come to talk about the, um.
Yeah.
And I'll move everything else around that. Was everything else okay? To accept for, um, I think so. Yeah, I mean, he cut it down a lot, which is probably not a bad thing. Thank you for, yeah.
Yeah, you took some of the detail off that finish.
Should it be by May thirty-first or no later than May the first? No later.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Um, I mean, you know, hopefully, um, you're gonna reach out to the mediator, so hopefully by next week we can also.
Yeah, and I just didn't mention any specifics to the extent that.
Yes, I get it.
I don't, I wanted to make a general error.
Yeah, it's fine.
We are certainly doing.
Yeah, and we mentioned in the previous meeting that we were gonna be doing that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I was just like laying out there, like, I don't want her to be able to say that we're not doing anything.
Yeah.
Because I feel like I was accused of that, and I think this is your.
Well, we're, and, and we're beginning, but.
Right, it's, it's a process, it's not gonna happen overnight, and I don't think anybody reasonable would say that. But I thought, um, I, I think that we're acting, this is, this is our third meeting, I've been on the job two weeks. Right, we hired counsel, we found an mediator, we're about to hire H R person, like, I, I think we're making a lot of progress. Yeah, we're, we're working, we're working, okay.
Then it's almost ready.
I know it. Oh, yeah, we, we are fired.
This girl is on fire.
Did you get the, uh, did you get the initial, um, hire fee or whatever that thing is? Love that dude. Talking to me? Yeah. Did I get the original one?
Yeah, she got all of it.
Oh, you got it all. Is that the new one?
Sure, if you have changes, I can just, we can.
Yeah, well, whatever.
And we're meeting with the bylaw review committee in about a month, right?
About a month.
Six twenty-nine, right?
Most, mostly, Justin, just because we have a metric crap-ton of questions to counsel.
Yeah, and I noticed, I noticed, I forget whether it was our last retainer agreement or flat fee agreement or someone else's, that bylaw review might be outside of the.
Out of the retainer.
Out of the retainer, which is fine, because frankly, the other thing that sometimes it seems people do is hire a consultant. So we've actually, by having citizens do it.
Done. Voila.
Since I'm only one of five, I'm, you know, not even four. A lot of the bylaws seem like the town voted to do this. The town voted to do this.
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't necessarily bylaws. The town voted to accept the provisions of mass general law. Okay, and when you read mass general law, it says if a town votes to accept the provisions of, but that's not a bylaw, that is a town meeting vote that should be, in my humble opinion, outside of the bylaws.
Yeah.
So this.
Um.
So we're really trying to bring down the real.
I'm gonna adjourn.
Yeah, but adjourn.
Motion. And I will second Susan's motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
And Susan's motion, yes, I vote yes, meeting adjourned.
Um, so Melissa.